Six, six oh one. And at this time, we will call to order the thirty November meeting of the King George County Planning Commission. For the record, we do have a quorum. We have seven, six members present and one, uh, seven members present. And, uh, one, uh, participating telephonically, Mr. Myers. So at this time, if I could ask those in attendance who are able, please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. Neither black, nor United States of America, neither Republic, which is one nation, one God, and limited all liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Williams, would you be so kind as to lead us to an invocation?
By our heads. Heavenly Father, once again, we give you praise and thanks for allowing us together once again to do the business of your, your will, the Lord. In this county, the Lord, we ask that you give us pure hearts and pure minds as we make decisions, the Lord, and make them, uh, within the righteous eyes of, of this county and the people who reside in it. These and other blessings, we pray. Amen.
All right, Mr. DeCorder, you're right up here. All righty, the next item on this evening's agenda is public comment. Um, I do not see any folks in the audience that may be interested. Mr. Dines, do we have anyone online who's interested in speaking, uh, the public comment portion of our event?
No, Mr. Ch.
All right. Excellent. Thank you, sir. So at that point, brings us to the fourth item on our agenda, which is zoning and subdivision ordinance update from the Berkeley Group. So thank you all for coming. I'm going to turn the floor over to you.
Assume this mic is, yep, it's on too. You're right. Great. So I'm Rebecca Cobb with the Berkeley Group. It's great to be here again with you. Uh, joining me is also Steph Mathina. Um, and we'll share in presenting, um, to you tonight. So good to be here with you, Planning Commission and staff. For this first work session as we dive into your zoning and subdivision ordinance update. Says it's on. Yeah, all right. So for tonight's agenda, we're going to go through the schedule and progress to date. Talk about public engagement, kind of give you a summary of the engagement that we did and what we heard. Talk about the proposed ordinance structure, so laying out, um, the structure of the ordinance and then the next steps that we'll be taking. So your project schedule, we've kind of come through that first straight stretch and around that first curve of public engagement. And now we're headed into this next straight stretch, which is going to go from now until early spring twenty twenty-three. So quite a while there of drafting and work sessions with you all. And then we will, um, have another time for public engagement where we will refine the ordinance after an open house. And after that open house, we'll have another work session where we really get into that refinement in spring twenty twenty-three. And then we're looking at, uh, summer twenty twenty-three for adoption. So again, investigation and public engagement, these are the things that we have done thus far. So we kicked off with staff, we reviewed your documents, we kicked off with you all in the Board of Supervisors. And then we went into public outreach, held stakeholder sessions, public workshops, and held a, a public survey that was out for a month. So all of those things are done. And now we're going to start getting into the content development. So this is the basic items of what goes into your ordinance, and we're going to go through those kind of section by section. And we're going to talk about that in a little bit. And then we'll get into adoption at the very end. Again, there's going to be a public open house where public can see what has been drafted. And that allows us to fine tune it so that hopefully when it comes time for adoption and public hearings, everyone's happy and they stand up here and they say, yes, adopted, it's great. Community engagement. So the public survey, we gathered input, um, from community members. There were five hundred and seventy-two responses. So we were happy to see that number. Public workshops focused on the specific zoning concerns. Um, we had small group discussions in those workshops. And then stakeholder listening sessions allowed us to kind of dive in a little bit deeper, um, with sixteen stakeholders. And so now we'll get into some of the results and I'll let, uh, Steph take over.
Hello, everyone. Good to see you all again. So I'm going to give the, um, high level overview of some of the results and hopefully in your packets, you have the full shebang there. So if you want to follow along, I'll call out a couple of specific things, but, um, all of the details are in there. So for starters, the top three zoning and land use priorities were, the first one is preserve ag, um, and rural character, which came over fifty percent, um, at sixty-three percent specifically. Question six of the survey asked, which of the following options would you support to maintain the character of rural areas? And a few things that came up on the top there were limiting the number and or size of divisions of ag lots. Offering tax incentives to promote agriculture and farm, farming, and then to require larger lot sizes in rural areas. I'll go ahead and call out that while the survey had this to say about larger lot sizes, it was a common thread throughout the public workshops. And I would say even in the stakeholder sessions, that the county maybe have a little bit too much ag, A two. Um, and a lot of large lot sizes, which just came up, um, so a little bit of a dichotomy there. It might be something we want to keep an eye on, um, as we keep going. The second top, um, priority. Oh no, it's happening again.
There we go.
Oh. Back up, close your eyes, close your eyes. The second one was encouraging new commercial businesses, which was just under forty percent. Um, and question eight of the survey asked, what uses would be encouraged that were non-residential? Um, and it was lumped in with a few other things, industry, ag, that sort of thing. Fifty-nine percent of survey takers encouraged small commercial development, which would be, uh, essentially mom and pop shops, local businesses, small businesses, that sort of thing. Forty-eight percent of survey takers encouraged event venues, which is a loose term, but in a setting such as King George, it would be, um, probably on an ag lot somewhere. Away, maybe a wedding venue, um, could be a, a low maintenance music venue or that sort of thing. Fifty-four percent of survey takers encouraged agritourism, which is similar to an event venue in this sort of space. That could be hayrides, pumpkins, pick your own, um, that sort of thing. Wineries and distilleries, those are a separate thing in the state of Virginia, um, and often get confused. Which sixty-one percent of survey takers encouraged distilleries and wineries. And jumping ahead to the workshop, there was comment that if, if we're allowing breweries, why not allow distilleries and wineries? And so a couple of other things that were mentioned, um, were hotels, and this came up across the board. That there's a bit of a, a lack of transitory, um, staying options. The hotels seem to get full with students from Dahlgren, um, is what we heard a lot of. So hotels are desired with restriction. That was a caveat there, just not totally free. Um, and then as small as, as large scale commercials, so that would be your box stores. Um, of course, what we heard a lot was Chick-fil-A, um, and Buffalo Wild Wings, so, um, so we have those as well. But they were pretty clear that they would encourage it, but with a few parameters in place. And then the third most encouraged priority was conserving sensitive environmental areas. Um, and again, this came up across the board, both in the survey and the workshops. Um, and a couple of choices that were made, um, these particularly came through in the comment sections of the survey. We didn't explicitly outright ask this in the survey, um, but people have offered this information on their own. A lot of what came through were tree canopies for development, um, parking lot landscaping, that sort of thing. Prohibiting the clearing of trees for solar projects, that was mentioned time and time again. And further to that point, using land that's already open for solar development, rather than something that you, to already have natural buffers and so on and so forth. Using permeable surfaces was mentioned, um, and then of course, protecting the wetlands from development, which is already happening. And I will say before we go on a little bit more, um, automotive uses came up a lot, both in survey comments and jumping ahead to the workshop. Particularly that there are a lot of them right now, and I am a little fuzzy on what that means. I don't know if it's auto body or tire. I think it's a little bit of both. So half of survey takers said that they would encourage more, and the other half, it was almost an even split, said that they would encourage more with restriction. So I, I do think that in moving forward, that use, um, would probably want to see some more landscaping or screening, um, that sort of thing. People don't seem to have a problem with it, but they would like it to be nicer to look at. Uh, the most encouraged non-residential uses again are agriculture was number one, um, at ninety percent of survey takers agreeing. And then outdoor recreation, which once again was a theme across all engagement. And then, uh, the third one was community services. The most preferred areas for development were Route Three and Three Oh One, um, Dahlgren and Route Three West, which, correct me if I'm wrong, but it, I think that's where most of, most of the growth is happening now. I think people are wanting to see it stay there in concentrated areas, um, which will come up again a little bit later. Some other notable findings, mostly satisfied with quality of development in residential and ag areas. It seemed to be across the board yet again, commercial areas left a little, um, to be desired, um, both, I think, in choice and beauty. So single family dwellings in the survey were the most encouraged, uh, residential use. However, in the stakeholder sessions and the public workshops, we heard multifamily, multifamily, we need multifamily. So that is probably the biggest, um, dichotomy between all of the engagement is this residential uses. Survey takers are saying, we want more single family dwellings. But the folks that we spoke to face to face were saying, we have so many single family homes, we need some more options, townhouses, that sort of stuff. Um, and then once again, there was a strong support for some design standards, like, um, landscaping, parking, lighting came up. However, I will say that there seemed to be, um, a temperature on loose regulation, keeping it a little business friendly. So that those small businesses can still come in, meet the standards we want to set, um, and then it not hinder them to grow. The public workshops, a lot of the same content that the survey was giving us. Ag and rural lands should be preserved at almost any cost. The county character is the priority. Cluster developments came up a lot during the workshop and the stakeholder sessions. I think Rebecca, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we got mostly positive feedback about that. Lots of questions on it, um, asking if it was a good fit, if it was a good option, so that can, King George can continue to grow, but do it in certain areas so that it's not, um, sparse like it is now. Um, again, desire for parking lot landscaping, particularly trees, which ties back to that tree canopy that we mentioned earlier. Folks would like to see some landscaping. There was also a comment during the public workshop period that folks that have landscaping now, um, don't always maintain it. So an enforcement issue there, um, maybe also something to keep an eye on, how we can make that a little more concrete. Again, commercial areas should be so attractive, going back to screening between uses, landscaping to make it more pleasing to the eye. But really, they drove home that it shouldn't be so much so that someone would say, I can't afford to do this, or I can't afford this timeline, I'm out of here. Building height came up a lot, um, they like to limit that. I don't think it's limited now in the zoning ordinance. We heard three feet or three stories, um, or the equivalency of whatever the fire trucks here can handle. We heard that quite a bit in a couple of different groups. Um, we also heard in the stakeholder sessions, if I remember correctly. And then another thing that came up in the workshops were more walkable areas, more compact areas. There were disclaimers that it, it's a long way off and it's not something that happens overnight, but if there were small measures that could be taken. Dahlgren was used as an example a lot around the Walmart area, um, just some sidewalks to make it more accessible to get to across the street and whatnot. And then along that same vein, um, again, going back to cluster developments, more sidewalk, um, provisions for subdivisions and all that good stuff. Just to increase not only walkability, but some more recreational opportunities that came up a lot, that there were, it was quite lacking. Even so much as just a simple sidewalk or a bike lane, sounds like would be sufficient for them. Um, and then finally, something that came up a ton was the comprehensive plan, settlement areas must be included. So they really want to see those things brought over into the zoning ordinance. There was, we'll get ahead to it, um, in just a moment, but there was a comment during the stakeholder sessions. That perhaps some of those things should be brought in as a by right to reduce rezonings. Um, again, something we, worth mentioning, but we'll keep an eye on. And then for the public workshops, specifically to uses, we had, um, a few, few discussions. Something that came up quite a bit for A two specifically, not so much in a broad sense, are accessory dwelling units. Um, it seems like it's something that people would like. They'd like to have the option to have a separate unit, either attached to their home or not attached to their home. For a family member or caretaker, whatever the case may be. Home businesses should be permitted. There was a bit of, um, a back and forth, a little bit of tug of war on that. It, overall, I would say that the community is encouraging it, but with some appropriate, um, conditions or, or standards. How many customers you can have, your hours of delivery, um, that sort of stuff. And then again, the automotive uses, um, could benefit from some buffering and landscaping. Another comment that came up about the automotive uses from one individual is that the existing establishments, generally speaking, I suppose, lack adequate parking. And there's nowhere, if you're on your way there, there's nowhere to park your vehicle. So maybe just taking a closer look at off-street parking requirements, um, and judging those a little bit if we need to. And then short-term rentals came up, this, another, um, topic that had an A and a B side. Some folks said, let them do it, it's their home, no one should tell them otherwise. But the other half of the room didn't disagree, just thought maybe there should be some limitations. Maybe a two-week stay cap or a limit to the cars or a limit to the guests, uh, quiet hours, those sorts of things. Solar facilities came up quite a bit. I think overall, we could say that people were encouraging of it, um, particularly small and medium scale, utility scale, different story. That's where people would like to see, um, the prohibit, prohibition of cutting any trees down, taking away any natural buffers. Um, and then if those things aren't in place, to have adequate buffers and screening. And then again, small-scale solar, roof-mounted and ground-mounted, both came up in discussion. We can dive into that as the process keeps going, but, um, it seems that there is an appetite for it. And then back to event venues, they're welcome with the appropriate conditions, particularly noise and parking is what came up the most. People just want to make sure that there's enough parking so that there's not cars on the highway, um, which is fair. And those are types of things that could go in new standards, just have to work out exactly what it is that we all agree on. And then similar to that is the agritourism. Big conversations that neighboring counties are doing it, um, it's a good fit for it. It would be easy for some folks here to pop up a U-Pic farm or to pop up a pumpkin patch or whatever the case may be, um, and that it should be encouraged. Moving on to the stakeholder engagement, um, which is what we did second. We had our first public workshop and then the next, um, workshop, we had the stakeholder in, engagement on the same day. We had four groups, um, the first group was mostly Dahlgren and military reps. The second group were some business owners, Chamber of Commerce. I think there were a couple of, um, realtors there and then Nick Minor, um, from Economic Development was there. And then the third group was tourism, um, and a couple of other special interests. There was a, a couple of folks there that, um, I, I suppose just have, um. One, he, he does stuff with walking trails in the community. They focused a lot on recreation and had some good, good things to say, so we'll get to that. Um, and then the last group were some engineers. We targeted surveys and co, surveyors and contractors, but we ended up with two engineers, one of which was incredibly familiar with the ordinance, which was nice. So some overall, um, themes that we saw, once again, solar development and the trees, everyone's on, on board there, um, don't take away the trees. Overall, lack of recreation, um, and some, some various things that could be brought up there were mentioned, that were mentioned. Movie theaters, um, passive and active trails, particularly on ag land, um, which it was, a point was made that now, I think, in, in boat, in all three ag districts. There are no recreational uses permitted. I don't know if that's true exactly all the way, but it, neither here nor there in this moment. So some more recreational opportunities. Another thing that was mentioned, which again, just because you allow it, doesn't mean someone will come in, the market, um, drives these things. But some indoor recreational opportunities, tennis courts, ball courts, that sort of thing, um, for all seasonal use. Once again, the comprehensive plan language came up, um, to bring that settlement area language into the zoning ordinance and bring that to life a little bit more. Agritourism, of course, could be leveraged as a unique driver for the economic development, um, actions of the county. It's popular in Virginia, but still not everyone gets it. So if you have the chance, um, the thought was to use it. Once again, cluster development came up to protect land, but also accommodate the growth that is happening and inevitable. So just to wrap it up, lots of the same conversations from the survey to the stakeholders, the public workshops. Some real common themes were more commercial businesses, particularly restaurants and food trucks came up, restaurants a lot. Once again, just because you allow it, doesn't mean it'll come here, and I think everyone is aware of that, but they'd like to see some more options. There were some comments from the stakeholders that development, the development processes can be a bit cumbersome and a little bit long. Which is they're seeing, I guess amongst their community, um, and their, their, um, industry partners, that developers are going elsewhere. Um, and so they've questioned if there were some things that could be a little more administrative to make development easier. So some things that we'll, we'll take a look at. But, um, encouraging small businesses, preserving land, getting a mix of housing, I would say that those are the, those are the things they really want to drive home. And of course, bringing in the comp plan language, they really loved it. Um, so kudos to you all. You did it. They love it. And they want to see it in here. You want to pause here and talk about the survey before we go on to the next part?
Yeah.
Let's do that. Okay.
So, so one quick question, like, um, and I think, Stephanie, you mentioned last time that in y'all's review of our existing ordinances and languages, that it wasn't necessarily that bad. And so I read in there a lot about, um, the ordinances or the processes or, or, or the language should be more simplified. Or, or easier or more straightforward. My perspective is pretty much unique to King George, so I'll kind of defer to y'all. And based on that initial comment that we mentioned from the last meeting. Are we really that complicated or is it just, I mean, what, or do you see this often? Or I mean, would it, how do you address that?
To the average person, to the layman that doesn't understand any of the stuff, you want to have it simple and a lot of what you all have is directly from state code, which is awesome. And it's word for word, but state code will make you want to bang your head against it. If you don't know how to make sense of it and untie the knots. So that would be my answer to that. It's not that it's, it's bad. You're just writing for the person who doesn't know what a zoning ordinance is. And you just want them to look at it and know exactly what they need. They don't need to call you. They don't need to go to state code. They can just say, oh, this is so simple. I know exactly what this is, which in every case won't be. Some things are just tedious. It's encumbersome. That's the nature of it. But Rebecca, do you have any?
I would just add that, um, I think we do need to look at the processes a bit. That wasn't a lot of our initial diagnostic. We weren't really, you know, diving into, you know, should this be administrative or should it go through this type of process? So those are type of, types of things that we certainly do want to look at. And I think we're also considering comparing what you all have with your neighbors, right? Because you want to be competitive in that way. And so right now, I'm not aware of, you know, other counties and, and what things that they allow to be administrative. But there may be more things that you want to be administrative or more uses that should be by right, and, and we'll check into that.
I, I was just wondering, I, I, I always wonder about that, and I know there's no way to really gather the data, but when, when I hear that, oh, developers are frustrated, so they're going somewhere else. Really?
Well, I think it also should be noted that we recently amended the ordinance to allow by right development, not to require Planning Commission or Board approval. Which historically was not the case, and some of those people in the stakeholder may not be aware that we have recently changed that within the last year or two.
To that point, that just reminded me, I think it was the last stakeholder group said that made such a difference. I don't remember who, who it was, but they did, they brought it up. They said, that was great. It's made things so much easier and so much better. Um, so thank you for the reminder.
Thank you.
I agree. I, I think it really did help address the function of fundamental capital. Because I hear that almost daily, in my pocket, and I'm willing, um, be yours to replicate before, no.
Hopefully in two years' time, you can say that.
That's right.
I, I think that part of this process will also be looking at what uses that are not currently by right, that possibly should be by right or is not a part of that list. So that will expand upon that administrative process as well.
What was that?
That came through in the OLS.
Yes, yes. It came across, um, in some of the survey comments, it came across in the stakeholder groups. And I would say loosely came across in the workshops again, it's just someone knowing the difference, the true difference between by right and not by right. But overall, yes, people would like easy, say I'm allowed to do it. You know, make sure I do it correctly and appropriately for everyone, so I'm not a menace, but otherwise, make it easy. Anything else?
Did anybody from the agricultural community show up in your work stakeholder?
Yes, and I wish I had my list in front of me, and I'm shaking my head at myself that I don't. There were a couple of folks, um, I would say three or four, Rebecca, sound about right. One gentleman, true blue farmer, I would say, I can't remember his name. And then there were a couple of other folks, yeah, he had big hat.
Ken Stroud.
Yeah, that's him. He was there, um, and then there were a couple of others.
Is Mr. Ashton there? Louis Ashton.
It's not ringing a bell.
Aaron Grigsby was on that.
He was, he was there.
I know Grigsby was invited. I'm not sure if he attended or not.
It would pay to know these people.
Well, while, while we're looking that up, the, the overall response, you know, mid-two percents, two-point-three percent of the population, where does that fall, like in the distribution, good, bad, regular?
Are you looking, which number are you looking at specifically here?
It was what, five-hundred-and-fifty-seven residents for the one res, uh, survey.
Yeah, so any of these numbers here, so when we talk about these percentages here, ninety percent of those five-hundred-and-seventy-two people chose agriculture. However, I will make the disclaimer that not all five-hundred-and-seventy-two people answered every single question. We had about an eighty percent completion rate. So to answer your question, but also to not answer it, I don't have the exact answer to that. We don't know, you know, how many of those ninety percent went all the way through the survey. But they can be trusted, the numbers can be trusted.
Yeah, actually, my question was, uh, five-hundred residents out of what, twenty-four, twenty-five thousand people in the county responded. Where does that? Five hundred residents out of twenty-four, twenty-five thousand people in the county responded, where does that number fall?
Right, I don't know the population of the county, what is?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven thousand.
It could be higher, the number could be higher.
To put it in context, if I remember correctly, when we were doing comprehensive plan, our response rate was in the two hundreds. So I think it has certainly improved.
Okay, I thought we had had more like eight, for some reason.
I want to say two hundreds, but that's from memory.
And this is a, it's shone in the dark, but. And it may not be worth saying, there was so much consistency through the survey results. That if another thousand were surveyed, I wonder if it would. There was a lot of consistency, not only with the survey, there were a few outliers, again, the residential uses are the one that comes to mind.
A couple of times you mentioned that, you know, they, they wanted to see, you know, the comprehensive plan recommendations in the zoning ordinance. For the settlement areas in the zoning ordinance, you know, in my mind, those things are like lockstep, you know. Totally coupled, do they just not understand that, that that's our guiding policy when we make those decisions?
I think I'd have to look closer at it, look at it again, we looked at it during the diagnostic process, but kind of loosely, I'd have to go back and look at it. One more time, but if there are things, they, I, hopefully they do understand that. But I think that there may be some things that just haven't been driven home yet, perhaps, again, I'd have to take a look at it before I can look you in the eye and say that for certain.
And so when, when you say like, put those settlement areas in the zoning ordinance, like, add the maps, the overlays?
So whatever is written in those, those bits of language, give me one of the settlement areas. Let's just say in that one, it said, by right, small, 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 commercial. Everything should be landscaped, there should be sidewalks so people can walk, those are the sorts of things, now again, I know it may not say that. Those are the things that they would want translated into the regulation, requiring sidewalks, no matter what. Requiring landscaping, no matter what, in those areas, which, when we say those areas. Whatever that settlement area is in those zoning districts that it ties to, is what they would, what they're asking for. Again, I don't, I'd have to take a closer look to see what's, where the scales aren't balanced, but that's what they're, that's what they mean.
Okay, and then on the, uh, solar, solar farms continued to come up. Were, were there any discussions on energy storage?
There weren't any, Rebecca, do you remember? No, I think it's something that if you're not familiar with the. You're not going to, there was a small, 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 minute amount of discussion on it damaging the ground and remediation. And so that they would like remediation measures in place, but no mention of, um, storage.
And, and what about data centers?
Nope, nothing. I don't think so, not that it rings a bell.
If I can ask one more question about, um, there was a lot of discussion there about commercial, and you mentioned too, was. If you, if you could tell, was most of the commercial, or the desire for additional commercial, or I guess better commercial. In the form of restaurants?
So in the survey, there wasn't any part of the survey that explicitly said, choose restaurant as an option. It came through in the written comments, and it came out a lot in the workshops and the stakeholder groups. I think what I heard to quote them, was there a lot of pizza and a lot of Chinese? But that, or what, something to that effect, just not a lot of options. And so if there were, what was it?
Lot of Greek food.
Just not a lot of variety, and that perhaps if, uh, if we could work that out. So that, again, knowing that just because you say, every restaurant's allowed, that someone's not going to build it. But they, a lot of conversation about restaurants.
Okay, so that was, that, that kind of is my question, the backend of that was going to be, and it might be interesting, but deferring to y'all as experts. If, if there's a trend, or have you seen a trend?
I hate to interrupt you, but online would like us to speak into the microphone so they can hear, thank you.
Sure, um, there was a, one comment in there, and I think I saw it a couple of times about bringing in bigger. Like, there was a comment about the big box stores, and then, um, there was another comment about. The missed opportunity at three and three oh one, which for the record was fifteen years ago, so there's not a single person on the board that has anything to do with that now, but. If, if I could, like I said, defer into y'all's expertise, have you seen a trend moving away from that because of online shopping? Or post-pandemic, or pandemic related things, I mean, I'm just wondering, when we go to move forward with this, and if that's, because it was in there a bit. If we really should take that into consideration, or if there are trends moving away from that, just for the way people are naturally to, you know, shopping in different ways. Via the internet or, or other things like that, and how do we address those types of, of concerns?
So I would just add on, you know, restaurants was a big thing, the other thing that, that I felt like we heard was that. It was more of a desire for smaller scale versus the big box store. It, it was, you know, how can we keep the entrepreneur, the, you know, small business guy. Little mom and pop shops and those types of things versus a big box store.
Well, we're talking here about services and retail and services, community services. Wasn't there anything about tech or industrial job creating businesses? Didn't anybody respond in, in that way, I thought I saw a line.
Small comment, small discussion in the very first workshop. And it was essentially to encourage more industrial uses in the county. But not so much so that, because it becomes a dumping ground for everyone else around that doesn't want to allow X, Y, and Z industrial use. But I'm recalling a lot of tech services, or even office sort of data centers. Like an Amazon distribution center, again, maybe they just aren't familiar with those, those things, but. I heard a loose comment about industrial uses, but nothing too specific.
And in the survey. Question five, actually for industrial, it had more of discourage. Versus the encourage or encourage with restrictions. So yeah, and, and I recall the same thing from the workshops and stakeholders, it was more of a focus about commercial versus industrial.
So, and then my last question is regarding, there was a lot of mention of agriculture, you know, maximize its use, do more of it, increase. So, the two-part question, I mean, making more agricultural areas equals cutting trees down, right?
So I think most of their, their desire is to keep what's here. To not take what's already open or developed, or sitting there rural, and develop it. Or when and if you have to, just to do it concisely and compactly. Not so much to make more agricultural land, but to keep what's here. To keep what's there, I think the only thing that would maybe go against my statement is going back to that lot size. Conversation of, some folks are encouraging larger lot sizes, and some are encouraging lesser. Whereas that that wouldn't necessarily go down and cut every tree over time, smaller lots would eat up more of the land over time. But, does that answer?
It does, and then lastly, you know, agriculture is, you know, from a revenue point, not a large, you know, cash cow. So, how's that balanced in terms of the future of counties, you know?
Hi Rebecca, do you have an answer for that?
I think it, it, it's about striking the balance and making sure that the zoning, that you have the zoning districts in place. And the areas that you want to preserve your prime agricultural lands, which you, you know, identify in your comprehensive plan and that sort of thing. And then making sure that the other areas can be densely developed. So then it's not the, the pressure on those ag lands anymore, because you, you've got the adequate housing and the adequate commercial in these other areas.
So, force them in those areas, yes, okay, thank you.
So there wasn't specific conversation as far as agritourism equals jobs, yay. But it was a lot of agritourism would fit here, we shouldn't discourage an owner of their land from doing it. It would create more income, it would have a benefit to the economic development.
It's a lifestyle.
Not necessarily, this is going to boost us up right away, immediately. But that it would fit here, and that it would have some effect, whether that's making two jobs or two hundred jobs. Of course, I couldn't say, but yes and no.
Mr. Decort, please, use your mic, thank you.
What I hear is, um, there's less of the desire for the big box store. There's less of a desire for five thousand acre wheat farms. When, uh, the commercial retail is job creating. It's, they would rather work in a family business throwing pots and, and sell them on Etsy. Than work in a data center.
Right, um, yeah, I, back to your earlier question. I, this isn't a concrete answer, I don't think that stores are going anywhere. Because if, if anything, I feel like people want to be back out in the world. Everyone is a little different, and every place is a little different. But in this community specifically, people were saying, we want stores, we want to walk out to a store. Park our vehicle, go inside and shop, we want to have a new restaurant. So overall, it may be shifting, but I think here, in rural places specifically, it's, that's not going anywhere. People want to be with people. Anything else?
I, I have a question, can we expand upon the conversations that were had regarding, including the comprehensive plan in our zoning ordinance? Do you think that there might have been a misunderstanding of the difference between the two? That just because it's a settlement area, doesn't mean that it automatically changes the zoning to by right, commercial, or, or something of that nature? What kind of conversations do you, do you recall?
The stakeholders, and, and I think it was a group, I think it might have actually been the, the engineer group, maybe. There was desire there to do more zoning math, so kind of beyond just like the zoning ordinance. But, and, and some of the other areas too, I think, from the, the workshop. But to kind of look at these settlement areas and go ahead and zone those particular areas appropriately. And have text in your ordinance that supports. High-level commercial, identity, residential, those types of things. So sort of going ahead and fleshing out what that looks like.
They wanted the zoning done upfront, so they don't have to rezone, is that what you're saying?
Yes, from some perspective, yes, was that if that zoning is done upfront, then it does ease the process, it's more attractive for people to come in. And because the comprehensive plan says this is where we want it, it shouldn't be a big question about. Are we going to approve or not approve, that sort of thing. Thank you.
All right, one, um, one thing, I remember we were talking about the very first winery they came, was that White House? Or White Farm, or?
White Hall?
White Hall, yeah, and it was a great area between a winery and agritourism. Well, that was also an event venue. Event venue and agritourism, was that all kind of lumped into one?
They're using the agritourism scenario to justify the event.
So, to recap, by right, you can grow grapes, turn them into wine, and have a tasting room as agro, agricultural. No permit necessary, when you start holding events such as weddings is when, or music festivals or things of that. That's when you have to have that special exception, and that's what White Hall was here asking for, was we have a winery, now we want to have weddings. So that, that's where your cutoff is.
Which the way that we've typically done things is, we have event venues, which are separate. Which we've already discussed, but just to clarify.
What do you mean, we?
Berkeley Group, we typically suggest to have event venues as a specific use that's completely different from agritourism.
I think that kind of makes sense for us too, because we've been approving event venues on parcels that just have some guy with a barn.
So we do have event menus separately, I think that it has become somewhat trendy to have barn weddings. And that's why you're seeing, uh, more barns coming in forward and asking for those special exceptions, such as White Hall. So it, it doesn't require that it has to be an active farm. I could have a lot of agricultural land and come in and apply for an event venue, just as much as White Hall could being a winery.
Anything else?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Ready to move on?
One, one question I had was on the solar side, was there a certain stakeholder group that was asking for that, or?
Let me look back. I think it was several times, Rebecca, do you remember who it would have been? I think it may be group two. Which would have been. Economic development, business owners. Groups may have, one or two in there, but it came up a couple of times.
Okay. So that was business, business owners?
Yes. And then it, it came up in the workshops as well, which of course, no one has identified there. And then in the survey as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? No? Good. This thing says, it's seven PM, I'm not working. I'm just going to keep pressing, and then it's going to shoot forward. Wake now, okay. All right, so moving on to the proposed structure ordinance, or ordinance structure, sorry, it's seven PM. You may have it in front of you there, so we're going to give you the overall high-level view of it, and then we'll dive down into a couple of these articles. So Article one's going to be your general, um, general statements that are in every ordinance, most of what you have now. Article two would be administration, Article three is permits and applications, these are all pretty boilerplate, pretty common. Nothing too fancy there, we're going to streamline some stuff in those articles, consolidate some of what you have now. So for example, all of permits and applications will be in one place, it won't be repeated several times, you'll know exactly where to go. Article four will be your primary zoning districts, and we'll dive into that in just a minute. And then Article five will be all of your overlays. Article six is what Berkeley Group typically does, is what's called a use matrix, and I'm going to show you an example of one. And I think we may have showed you one already, but if not, we'll cover it in just a minute. And so what the use matrix does, is it takes all of your uses in every district, and it lists them out. So you can see them in one simple chart, and you can see how they're permitted, so you can look and say, okay, what is a single-family dwelling? Is it, where is it permitted and how? So it's by right in all residential uses or districts, and for some reason, it's by special exception, commercial. But whereas now, it's listed individually in each, each district, which it can stay that way. But a use matrix just allows you to look at one place, one time, and see it all together. If you were a developer coming in and you wanted to open a store, you could see both small scale and large scale, or every different variation that you have. If you end up having grocery stores and general stores, you could see them side by side, rather than going back and forth. So that's the benefit to a use matrix. And then Article seven is going to be the use performance standards, some of which you have now. And then as we introduce new uses, if it's appropriate for them to have use standards, that's where they'll live. And then Article eight is the community design standards, we'll dive into that in just a minute, but those are your parking, landscaping, et cetera. And then Article nine is non-conforming uses lots and structures. Article ten will now be subdivisions, we're bringing that subdivision ordinance in, so it's a one-stop shop. And then Article eleven will be definitions. And just a note here, in the existing ordinance, Article thirteen, which is your stormwater management. And then Article fifteen, which is your wetlands ordinance, we are suggesting to pull those out. And leave them separate out of the zoning ordinance, it's a best practice to leave them separate. You can leave them as written, just pull them out so they'll live in the county code separately. Sort of like the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance are now, they're not the same thing. Again, it's just a best practice, it cuts down on some of the language, and it doesn't apply to most folks. But it will still exist, just in a new streamlined place. So Article four, again, is your primary zoning district, so this will be broken into divisions. And then the divisions will be broken down further into sections. So Division one will do the establishment and purpose of the districts overall, the purpose of delineating the districts, et cetera. Division two will be general district standards, this will be your setbacks, height, lot coverage, any other thing that is a district standard. Will go into Division two. Division three will be exemptions and encroachments from those general district standards. Division three will be exemptions um and encroachments from those general district standards. Something that comes to mind is maybe there's some ag exemptions for barns or houses. Um, that wouldn't apply, the district standards wouldn't apply to. Division four is going to be all of your agricultural districts. Division five will be all of the residential. Division six will be both of your commercial. Division seven will be both of your in industrial districts. And then Division eight is what we're going to be calling planned development, which is your resort community and your mixed use district. So you have now. And then Division nine will be cluster provisions. Any questions on Article four before I move on?
How would uh a new type of district be added, like in the future?
So the same way, just an amendment. So if you were adding a a fourth agricultural district, it would it wouldn't change the division or the articles here. You would just end up having new sections.
No, I don't mean of existing, like a new division, a new, not not within the existing ones, like a space cadet district, you know, as the world evolves or who knows?
Um, so you would just have an amendment and you would add it the same, sort of like the same process that we're doing now.
Okay.
And then which space cadet would most likely go in Article five? Um, this is your overlay zoning districts, so this will be again, the establishment and purpose, which is just, hey, this is what Article five is all about. Here's what's going on. And then Division two is your Chesapeake Bay preservation overlay. Division three will be the flood plain management. Division four will be the highway corridor. And then Division five will be the brand new military overlay. Any questions about Article five? These are pretty straightforward, but they will ultimately have a lot of layers to them.
So ditto for adding additional overlays?
Yep. Pretty easy, lengthy, but easy process.
Just another, just for your, for us to understand, did you find that people didn't quite understand A one, A two?
I would say that Rebecca, correct me if I'm wrong or if you think differently. From what we heard, those folks seem to have concrete opinions about it, meaning that they've done their homework. I don't, I don't, maybe you think differently. I don't know. At least for the A two, we heard a lot, a lot, a lot about A two.
Really?
Not so much A one or A three, and that makes me think that they did go through and read everything. But I don't know if they did cross comparison and I don't know if they went through that.
I I would agree, and be and because you got to keep in mind stakeholders or, you know, people that really have at least glanced at the ordinance. Same thing probably for the people who showed up at the workshop, you know? Um, in terms of survey, there wasn't, you know, specific, we didn't call out anything related to A one, A two, A three. So, yeah.
Cool, okay.
But it does seem like the folks that spoke up about it seem to have done their research before.
Was there any, you know, metadata on the stakeholders, like? Do you own in A one, A two, A three?
No.
So like, maybe that's where they're coming from, what they know.
Perhaps, perhaps, um, and some of the workshop folks had some discussion about A two. And again, those folks aren't pinpointed. I don't, not sure if she, uh, if they have lots of land or or just familiar with it. Um, so some things are always just remain a question mark. But we try. Okay.
And now I'd add, hold on, and I would add to, we did have a map of the zoning. And so it could be related to where people live, because I, you know, they were looking at the map and going, where am I? And then it'd be, you know, you're in A two. And so then that might be reason for some of the comments was they were living in A two.
And maybe some bias.
I do think during the the workshops and the, you know, not the stakeholders, but we did spend some time kind of educating. The people who attended, you know, do you understand this versus that, et cetera? So there there was a little bit of of education that came along as well, even though they were not well attended. But.
Those that were there, they learned. All right, so Article six, again, this would be the use matrix, and this is just an example of what one would look like. Um, this is what we put together to showcase the your your current ordinance. Um, and how it's regulated now. So just as another example to reiterate this. If you had a use matrix, you would have every single use listed and you would have it listed by type. So we would have all the, not necessarily by district, um, that would go the other direction. So we'll have all the residential uses together, all of the commercial, all of the public. So recreational, utilities, um, government buildings, all those sorts of things would be in a category. Agriculture would be one here. What am I missing? We have a miscellaneous to catch all the outliers. That's everything. Give or take. Um, so then what you have is let's just take bed and breakfast. It's right there at the top. You would say, oh, I want to open a bed and breakfast. Where can I do it? So in the current ordinance, you would have to go through and you'd have to look through each district, which is.
Right.
X amount of pages. Whereas in a use matrix, you can open it up, say bed and breakfast, and just run your finger right over and say, oh, great. I can do it in A one and A two with a special exception. If it's blank, it's not allowed. And so it's really just a quick little way to look and see where can I do this?
Cool.
Yeah.
And I'll add to, uh, because I've seen this, you know, some people are, I'm A two, what can I do in my A two? You know, which is similar to what you have now with your listing of things. But so you can do the same thing here. You can go to the A two column, follow that all the way down and see, okay, what are special exceptions? What are by right items? What is not allowed?
No, that's really good.
Yeah, that's that. Just visual.
Yep, it helps.
Right.
Would you add lot sizes up there with each of those? Do you do that or?
The district standards, that's something else that we created for you all to sort of showcase. And I think we brought it at some point, but we don't have it this evening. Um, it's something that Berkeley Group tends to do, same things, but that will be in. That Article four, Division two, it would be there.
Well, and I think you're talking about for particular uses, like if a use requires a larger lot, is that what you're asking?
Ten acres or?
Yeah, we do the similar matrix in the A one in that Article four that she's talking about. There will be a table there that's gonna show all the A districts and the the lot sizes there. In terms of any uses, if there's a additional setback or something like that that's required. That's gonna follow this article um and be in the use performance standards.
Which would be, where are you? Article seven?
Article seven.
So let's just say stable. If stable was allowed in A one, but it needed to have, you know, five hundred thousand acres, let's just be crazy. It would be in Article seven. It would be listed in the use standards there. Does that make sense?
Yeah, what about chickens, horses and bees? No.
That's, we should talk about that when we get to that, um, but that would be a similar thing. So you, oh, no, okay.
We've we've.
That's a good example for here. We've gone through it and we've said, oh, the keeping of bees, the keeping of chickens, these are uses. They, do they need standards? What's going on? Um, and if so, that's where they would live, is Article seven.
That's right.
Roaming.
And we learned that chickens eat ticks.
It's like Hawaii.
Chicken eat ticks.
Okay, any questions on the use matrix? Any questions on the phone? No?
As far as? Okay.
All right, and then Article eight, um, just to dive into this one a little bit, like I mentioned, it's sort of the aesthetic article. So this would be, again, it would have a general, just to sort of say what's going on, what its purpose is. And then Division two would be lighting. Division three would be landscaping and screening, which includes buffers. Um, so any sort of buffering, screening or landscaping would be in that division. Uh, Division four would be parking and loading, off street parking, loading, um, shared parking, all those good things. Division five would be signs. And then Division six and seven are new, um, and up for discussion. Division six is neighborhood compatibility. And what we've seen in some benchmark communities is this is a way to control development. Without having a historic overlay or some other overlay that says you can do it. One example would be. Building direction needs to face the road. Those sorts of things. What am I, give me some, it's late.
And this was brought about because of some discussion saying, you know, we want things to kind of be gradual. So even though we're saying we want to preserve ag and we want these other areas that are, you know, dense and commercial and residential. We want to make sure there's that middle compatibility. So things aren't just bam, here's this huge, you know, so some of that may include.
Height restrictions.
Right, exactly. That's where I was going, that, you know, if if you're adjacent, if you're building in this area, but you're backing up to an ag or, you know, something like that, then there's some height restrictions or.
Zoning buffer, basically.
Which would be, this Division six would essentially be extra. Depending on what's what uses or what districts are abutting each other, because those things would already be covered in the district standards. Um, or the landscaping and screening, but like Rebecca said, if it's, you know, industrial against residential or what, anything else that's not similar. Those extra measures would come into place there, because height would already be set. Um, perhaps, we'll see. Setbacks would already be set, so these would be in addition to.
Is this where the home occupation would fall into play as well? Like, a lot of people mentioned, you know, it may be acceptable in residential lakes to have a home occupation that nobody knows you're there. But I may not want. A sign maker, having people coming in and out all hours of the day.
Uh, my immediate answer would be use standards.
Use standards, okay. All right, thanks.
So would would Article eight be requirements or suggestions?
Requirements.
And would that be across all zoning districts?
All zoning districts, um, so let's just take parking, for example. That would either be, Rebecca, you might need to speak to this a little bit more. It would more more likely be by use in that case, so if a restaurant, you know, you, these are your parking requirements. Drive through restaurant, these are your parking requirements. School, terrible example, but.
What about a home? I could see how.
No, 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 home wouldn't apply, no.
Okay.
So to that point too, though, what about um like sidewalks and subdivisions? Would that fall into there into Article eight? Because we get that a lot, right? Like, um, they can build a subdivision when there's sidewalks and.
It it could be, and that's something that we'll have to flesh out as we get get to that. That might actually be a good place for that. So that, yes, if you're in, you know, this district next to this district, then yes, you build, you know, sidewalks. And and talking about the parking lots, you know, it could be, if you're in this location, your parking lot needs to be behind your building or to the side of your building. It shouldn't be in the front or, you know, different things like that. So it kind of gets into a little bit more nitty gritty on design in particular areas.
So this is not for residential neighborhood? Okay, I think I'm I'm distracted by neighborhood.
Gotcha.
Okay.
So this would be applicable to what which? Districts if homes residential or not included?
Right, so like if gateway were to come again, these would be neighborhood or compatibility, where you have different uses backing up to one another. But more commercial uses, not residential uses.
Right, which I don't remember if it was the first meeting with you all that we talked about this buffering. Some folks get really, really, really detailed and say, they basically make sort of like this, but for buffers. And it says, okay, if you're in A one and you're abutting against A two, these are your your landscaping and your buffers. If you're A one against R three, um, so that no matter what the combination of things are, the intensity level is addressed. So if it's A one against industrial, that would have the highest, you know, intensity for landscaping and buffering. If it's R two against R three, it would be quite minimal. I don't know where I was going with that or what made me think of it. But that sort of would be the same, similar idea with this neighborhood compatibility. Um, it wouldn't necessarily speak to everything, but it's more or less about when people are coming up against each other. That makes sense. And it could be, it could be, you know, worked out a little bit more. Maybe it doesn't fit. It's okay if it doesn't, um, it's okay if it's addressed in every other place of the ordinance. Um, but it's something that we've seen and so, um, we said, let's see how they feel. Which will probably need more conversation when we get into the nitty gritty of it. Um, and again, if it's. If it's in one place, it doesn't need to be in two, but if you all find that. Hey, we want to address the commercial against the residential. We want to address the, you know, let's pretend it's twenty years from now. The townhomes that are going behind Walmart in Dahlgren. Like those are, that's an example of of maybe that where this would come into play. Any more questions about Division six?
I'm just wondering though, when we when we go through some of this stuff. And I I'm wondering from a standpoint of do we need to also be at least conscious of the fact that the more. Um, I don't want to say restrictions, but the more covenants or or whatever that we put in here, it's gonna be an administrative. Element to it as well, so I wish the county administrator was still here, because I think ultimately some of these things are gonna generate the need for additional staff.
Absolutely, um, you know, a lot of these things, of course, we could regulate, but I have to have staff to regulate.
You've got to be able to have, yeah, it's gotta be, it's a, it's a.
You know, we've mentioned uh home occupation, their hours of operation or the hours that they receive delivery. I don't have the staff to say, yeah, this guy's getting deliveries at nine P M.
We've got the right real time example of signs. I mean, you can drive anywhere in county, you can go a mile in either direction and find any number of nonconforming signs. But until they're reported, nobody's gonna enforce it because there's your staff, right? And so, and so it's a.
And I think that, you know, we have to find that balance of, we don't want to do property maintenance, HOA type thing. But we also want to increase the the performance standards. For developers that are coming in more aesthetically pleasing, things of that nature.
Yeah, that's that's no in no way a knock on this. I think it's all good, but I think we also need to consider lockstep with the implementation of these new, the new language, that you're gonna need more people.
And more space.
And more space and.
But another thing.
For going down my wish list.
This Division six, um, and even Division seven. There, I've mentioned it several times tonight, there's an appetite for these things, this control of how things look and more landscaping and more parking. But on this, on the flip side of that same coin, people are saying, but we want it to be easy. We we don't want it to be expensive, um, so maybe these things don't make sense for that reason.
Right.
It's just more steps for someone to follow, whether it's a quick step or you have five more people overnight or regardless. Um, they may say, what the heck? I mean, more things? So it may not make, it may not make sense. We'll see. So with with that, Division seven would be similar to neighborhood compatibility. Um, and this would require open space. This could be tailored to how you wanted it. It could say every every piece of development across the county has to meet these open space standards. Um, let's just say, commercial needs to have three percent of the site needs to be a dedicated open space. Whether that's a patch of grass, a sidewalk, a bench. You could lay out those parameters and say what counts as open space and what doesn't. Stormwater um could count as open space or it could not. So this is essentially what Division seven would do. Um, it would require dedicated open space that maybe a developer wouldn't otherwise offer. And what it could do is maybe in the commercial areas, it could eventually piece together some sort of green. Some sort of sidewalk, some sort of, you know, place for folks to be walking and say like, oh, jeez, it's been five minutes and we put it down. Again, it may not, it may not make sense, but that's basically what that serves to do. Again, it's a new newer concept. Um, Rebecca, do you have anything to add on it? Just like Division six, it may come back and there may not be an appetite for it. As much again, as they they want the open space and they want the trails and they want the sidewalks, they don't want to be told. That it must be done in a certain way.
In terms of a little bit about the process, we will be drafting these articles and submitting them to you. And so when we do that, we're gonna look back at, you know, what we heard from the public engagement. We're gonna look at similar communities and we'll, you know, from that base our drafting on what we think is the best option for King George in twenty twenty three to be adopted. You know, and then we'll have discussions on that. If you if you all read it and go, wow, that seems like a lot. Then we can, you know, tailor it, edit it, so that'll be our our process.
I I think that also laying it out, a lot of developers would do these things if they knew that's what we wanted. And I think the impacts of a big box store versus a mom and pop retail sales store are much different. And maybe there's some scale that we can judge, you know, who should be providing these things and and who shouldn't. Or maybe not as much, um, I think it has to come into play as well.
Yeah, these, the, all of these, um, but particularly the last two can be as tight or as loose as you all need them to be.
Are there benchmarks?
So we'll look at those. So as we're drafting, yeah, we will look, that's part of our process is we, we, it's sort of just like an open dialogue with our brains and other ordinances. And we look at similar communities and we say, what are they doing? Um, whether that's immediately, immediately next door or across the state, but similar. Um, we see what they're doing, see if it might fit. Um, so yes, that comes up. Yep, mhm, yep.
So this also gives us the opportunity to inject, um, architectural things. So if we want to build King George as a crystal city and everything, all the exteriors, all the facades have to be glass.
So tell me if I'm wrong, state code, to do architectural control, you have to have, you have to have an overlay. You have to have in, in either a historic overlay or some other type of overlay that is directly about the aesthetics of it. So for neighborhood compatibility, you could go with, again, the direction or maybe, um, the scale of the building, but you couldn't get to the nitty gritty of, it has to all be brick, it all has to be brownstone. Everyone has to have, you know, iron railings. That, that isn't the purview of it. That is a little more, um, state code driven. But you, you could with your, um, if you all introduce some specific height standards into the district standards, that will keep things at a scale. If you take this Division Six and do some directional, um, again, they all have to face together or, um, there needs to be a tapering of, of, um, what is the word? Step backs.
Yeah, I, I think, I think, um, I think we all have been to Williamsburg, Virginia. I think that's a really good example of what you, what you. Yeah. So what I'm thinking is you have a part and they want to develop futuristic. Is that where King George wants to be in 20 years? Or are we trying to keep a more colonial historical feel in 20 years? So is that something we should be thinking about today and looking to, uh, put in our ordinance for guidance?
Yeah, I think.
I don't know the answer. I just started off there.
Right. Yeah, I don't know if I do either. Um, but I think if you all said to yourselves, we like the feel of what's here now. I mean, I feel like I'm always here in the nighttime. I don't even know what it looks like. I'm going to be honest with you. If you, if you, if you looked out there and you said, wow, we want this to stay, then yeah, I think it would behoove you to make some districts or some overlay districts where you can impose that control. Otherwise, it's really up to the developer so that you can't say, oh, this looks too much like Tomorrowland. No way, Jose.
You start wandering away from land use and wandering into the state building code.
And some, some localities will do it with a charter, um, if they don't have an overlay or whatnot. But to get, to, to have that discussion, to say, we want it to stay like this, or we want it to not be this, and we want it to all be glass. Um, you have to have certain, certain parameters in place before you can put more underneath that, if that makes sense.
Okay. So maybe not here, but we have other opportunities. I'm just thinking of King George, 20, 30 years from now.
In my mind, I think what we hear a lot is downtown King George, you know, it doesn't have a downtown feel. And, you know, you go to Warsaw and it has a look, right? I think that having that as an overlay, um, might be something that you might be, am I misunderstanding what you're?
No, I, I'm thinking we have someone who's got agriculture land. A developer buys a big hunk next door that farmer sold out. And if we don't have any controls in place, that new developer could, you know, I'm using glass because it's just striking. So they're going to build all these modern homes with, you know, crazy, uh, Van Gogh, missing ear kind of things.
Judy's of domes.
Yeah. And, and, um, is that what we want? You know, it's, I'm trying to think of King George in the future, not necessarily today. And.
I mean, currently.
Stuff coming or even a big box store, facade.
Right. I, I think, you know, in the back forty of agricultural property, I'm, I'm not sure that developers can come in and do that. They want to develop what's going to sell. And people come to King George, I believe not to buy a glass house, but that doesn't mean that an individual may not want to build a glass house. And I don't know that we want to necessarily get into your houses to futuristic looking versus.
Right.
We want a colonial look, but I could see where it would fit to say, we want to create a downtown King George that looks like Warsaw or another colonial Williamsburg.
So we, we'd probably deviate from the center block overlay.
I'm sorry.
We would deviate from the center block overlay.
Right.
Do we have Heather, any overlay districts now of any kind?
We have a highway corridor overlay district.
Right. That's the only one. There's no historical overlay. We're talking about military.
We're working on the military.
Right. So that, I think, gets to your question. Is like a high-traffic area? We do want, I agree, but our architectural view, I think it's Sanibel and I think of Nantucket. Two different approaches to the same thing you're getting. But, um, to either preserve or event having an overlay, I believe, we communicate to the developers, if you want to do this here, it has to have grade E.
Yeah. So if you wanted to, let's just say along Route Three and Three Oh One, if you want.
I, I take that back a little bit. We don't have an overlay, but if they were to rezone to a mixed-use development, I do think that we have some architectural standards in that area.
There is.
That I've never had to use, I totally forgot about.
There may be in some, in the resort community, I think, as well. Which, back to Division Eight, that planned development, um, Division in Article Four, planned developments are different than an ag or a residential district. You can, you can say, okay, if you're planning a whole community, this is, this is basically how it needs to go. These are the heights, these are the proportions, um, this is the general feel. But in just a, just in an ag district, you can't say, hey, if a developer comes in here, it needs to be all brick. Um, there's just, it's pretty tight where you can crack down and say exactly what it has to be without specific overlays and whatnot.
Yeah, no, I, when you clarify, that's really what I was thinking about is, like a downtown area. I mean, I, I was way off base thinking and bringing residential into my thought, but a downtown area, what's the look and feel? Um, the, um, commercial area, you know, is, is it going to be a walking mall? What's it going to look like? Is it going to be Alpine? Is it going to be beach?
Right. Not just taking the, the bottom standard of the development, one of the, the class A or class B development standard from target. Hopefully, maybe, uh, that sort of thing, I think is kind of what you're, you're getting at there. Yeah.
And the workaround to get that downtown feel that we heard so much about, that's where like your lighting and your landscaping, those are those things so that you can require that the outsides start to have some semblance of cohesion to them. So that in 20 years from now, there is a downtown. Um, so that's the workaround to, to getting those specific things.
Yeah. I, I gotta ask, did anybody bring up a bypass?
Yeah. Yes. But I think I was misunderstanding it at first. I thought it meant an actual bypass, but apparently it's a walking trail? Or am I, I'm off.
No, I think you thought it was a walking trail and I said, oh no, it's absolutely a bypass.
Never see, I had it backwards. Yeah, it was brought up a couple of times.
Walking's great, but driving.
I'm like. It came up in workshop number two, and I think it came up in the survey a couple of times. Um, but it was discussed in the second workshop.
Okay.
And so was the bridge.
Oh, yeah.
Bridge.
Yeah.
The period. I don't know anymore about that. Um, but just that once the bridge gets put in, it's going to be a set match. All right. Any more questions about this?
Thank you.
All right. This wraps this up. Um, so just to go back over the schedule so far, we're through public engagement. We're here with you all tonight, um, for the first work session of eight. The next one will be.
January twenty fifth.
January twenty fifth? Are we sure? Everyone's agreed?
January twenty fourth.
Are we set on January twenty fifth?
Okay.
What day?
Before I tell you that concretely.
Um, I took a look at this boardroom's, uh, meeting space and it seems as though the last Tuesday of the month is pretty open. And it seems amenable to planning commission, that perhaps we could consider the January twenty fifth and March twenty ninth, um, as our next two standing dates.
Six P M again.
Preferably, yes.
I'm good with that. We have dinner the next one?
Okay.
Light fare. It'd be very light if it's over.
All right. So the next work session will be January twenty fifth. And we are going to be talking about nonconformities, permits and applications. What else?
Administration.
Administration. The easy stuff. Start small. So that's what we'll do in January. And then from there, we'll have six more work sessions, rounding out in spring of 2023. Um, and then we'll button effort, everything up and then public open house. And then we'll be adopted in July of 2023, hopefully. Any questions about the schedule or what is next?
Thank you.
I think the presentation was great. I liked the heat map thing. It was, it's pretty neat.
Thank you. Worked very hard on it.
Thank you all for coming back on. Come down in the daytime sometime.
I know, I need to. The last time I was here in the daytime, but you know, you're in the zone and.
Next time we'll, uh, ride you around the county, hit the highway.
I, I don't know. I need to.
We talk about, about the automotive shops and Hop Yard.
No, and Hop Yard, yeah, I've heard so much about Hop Yard.
In downtown King George, we'll show you around.
Heather's got a helicopter. All right. I'm, I'm scrolling back up to the agenda slowly. Well, I just figured somebody may want to hang around a little. All right. I think we are at that point in our evening where, uh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I can't find the home button.
You don't have a home key on here, I don't think.
I don't think so. I was looking at it. Yeah, that's all right. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Meyer. I would like to, uh, if we have no other business, ask for a motion that, uh, uh, we adjourn this 30 November meeting of the King George County Planning.
A motion we adjourn.
Motion's been made. All in favor? Motion unanimously. Thanks, everybody, and have a good evening and Merry Christmas, I guess. Thank you all.
Sign out.
We won't see them. We won't see them.
No, that's January.
That's why I wished them a Merry Christmas.